Hello, everyone. We are so pleased to have you with us this evening for the an evening with the candidates for the Tamil Pious Union High School District Board of Trustees. I'm Anne Wakely. I am Secretary of the League of Women Voters of Marin County, and we are happy to bring you this forum in partnership with the Tam Union High School District. We're pleased to provide Spanish language interpretation for the forum. Our interpreters this evening are Karina Inigues and Annabelle Guerre, who will, and Annabelle is now going to tell you how to access the forum in Spanish.
Thank you, Anne. Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches. Queremos darle la bienvenida al foro de hoy. So I will provide instructions in English and in Spanish so that everyone can participate in the language of their choice. If you're joining us in English, please select the globe icon that is on the bottom towards the right-hand side of your computer screen. And that's all you have to do. Do not mute original audio. Si ustedes están participando a través de una computadora, por favor, seleccione el icono del globo terráqueo que está en la parte inferior de su pantalla cerca a la derecha. Puede ser que esté bajo los tres puntos que digan more o más. Si están participando a través de un teléfono o algún otro diapositivo inteligente, por favor, toquen su pantalla suavemente. Van a ver un tres puntos en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Seleccionen esos tres puntos y luego seleccione en español. Con ambas de estas opciones pueden silenciar el audio original para solo escuchar las intérpretes en español y no escuchar inglés al fondo. And if you're joining us via a smartphone or a tablet or another smart device, please touch your screen lightly right now and you will see a three-dot menu. Select that menu and then select English. Once you've done that, select Done and you'll be ready to go. And if you have any difficulties, please try to let us know if you're not able to select this and we'll provide instructions. Thank you so much.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for the Tamil Pious Union High School District Board of Trustees Candidate Forum. We welcome our viewers joining on Zoom or on Marin TV Channel 30. We're pleased to bring you this evening with the candidates in both English and Spanish. I'm Tara Topier, the Superintendent of the Tamil Pious Union High School District, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Marin County for organizing and moderating this evening's event. We are delighted to co-host this forum with the League and ensure that every voter have the opportunity to make an informed decision on this important leadership role in our county. And now I'm pleased to hand the reins over to this evening moderator, League member Susan Clark.
Thank you, Superintendent Topier. I am Susan Clark, your moderator for this evening, and I'll add my thanks for all of you joining us for this forum this evening. Tonight, we'll be hearing from candidates for Tamil Pious Union High School District Board of Trustees. That's the governing board for five high schools in central and southern Marin County: Archie Williams, Redwood, Tamil Pious, San Andreas, and Tamiskill High Schools. Coordinating this forum tonight is the Marin League of Women Voters, a trusted, nonpartisan membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We promote voter education and advocate for issues, but we never endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. Moderating candidate forums is an important part of our work. With me tonight are League members Carol Joy Harris, appearing as the timekeeper, and DeeDee Butori, behind the scenes, providing Zoom support, along with the technical support team at the Community Media Center of Marin. Doing interpretation tonight, we appreciate Annabelle Guerre and Karina Inigues. And again, you have the opportunity to select Spanish interpretation. This evening's forum is being simulcast on Marin TV Channel 30, facilitated through our partnership with the Community Media Center. It's being recorded and will be available at our website, marinlwv.org, and will be rebroadcast on Marin TV Channel 30. There are five candidates running for two openings on the Tam Union School District. Tonight with us are Ray Chattery, Jennifer Holden, Adam Klosner, and Ida Times Green, and Nicholas Andreaka could not be with us tonight. All the candidates have agreed to the guidelines and time limits for this forum. Each candidate is invited to make a two-minute opening statement, and after that, they will each have a minute to answer questions. To be fair, order will be rotated. For opening statements, we will begin with Amos Klosner.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. I'm excited to be running for the Board of Trustees. I have tested experience in school district oversight, starting in the Lagunitas School District when my daughter was in kindergarten with site council. I was appointed as a member of our bond oversight committee when we floated a facilities bond about a decade ago. I'm the only candidate here today that has bond oversight committee experience. I ran for the Lagunitas School Board and spent four years as a trustee there. My top priority was spending. I immediately met with our chief business officer. I got up to speed on income sources, spending categories, expense types, and where the district could find efficiencies. It was extremely important for a small district where every dollar accounted. I also was a trustee during COVID, which brought its own challenges. And many of you may remember that coming out of COVID, there was a very big push for teachers to receive a very large salary increase, which put a lot of pressure on us as a small district. Today, I'm an elected board member of the Marin County Committee for School District Organization. We are responsible for considering transfers of property within the county, where houses will be pushed into other school districts, and these kinds of things have a direct impact on taxpayers. So also very important committee. And then finally, I'm proud to be a coach of the Archie Williams Mountain Bike Team. I work with anywhere between 40 and 60 kids every year, so I have a direct connection with the students. And I live with my beautiful wife, who is a 27-year veteran of Marin County's public schools. She works in Bill Valley, so I understand a lot about what teachers are going through, and I think I have a pretty direct connection to the teacher experience.
Thank you very much. Our next opening statement will be Ida Times Green.
Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you to the Marin League of Women Voters and to those of you who have tuned in, because you could be watching Monday Night Football, but you're here, so appreciate that you are here on tonight. As a longtime resident of Marin City and a fourth generation of Tamil Pious High School graduate and former school board member, I recognize the importance of education. Having served eight years as a board trustee with the South Seattle Marin City School District, I bring a proven track record of building consensus to achieve collaborative outcomes. I work well with others and respect different perspectives. I am goal-oriented and comfortable taking risk. I'm a strong believer in the transformative power of public service, and I see it as my calling. I was born to serve. My mother had a long illustrious career in public service, and she was my inspiration. In that regard, I'm committed. I see the role as being accountable and responsible for all students. I personally know students and families in my community, but I will serve all students across the district. I believe in a balanced, representative, and holistic learning environment. I'll be the first to serve from the South Seattle Marin City School District and the first Black woman. Not that that should matter, but pointing it out to serve on the Tamil Pious Union High School District Board and I, that I'm aware of dating back decades. And I too was a member on Measure P, the bond that floated in the South Seattle Marin City School District. So I too have bond oversight. Thank you.
Thank you. The next opening statement will be from Jennifer Holden.
Hi, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. My name is Jennifer Holden. I am a mother to three children, one who just graduated high school and two who attend Archie Williams High School. I love our schools and have been an active volunteer for over 13 years, serving in various roles from parents' associations to student round, to superintendent roundtables, to the Racial Equity Task Force, and I'm currently serving in my third year on the Archie Williams Falcon Foundation, where we bridge the gap by funding programs and items for classes not funded by the state. In all of these roles, I've worked with teachers, students, and community members, and I've had the privilege to learn more about their needs. I'm running for the school board for the same reason that I volunteered for so many years: to be of service to the community that I love and to make the schools the best that they can be. If elected to the board, I will be guided by three core principles: a focus on improving academic performance and creating enhanced educational experiences for all students with evidence-based strategies, and by giving teachers the resources they need to be successful; rebuilding trust with our community by fostering increased transparency and communication between the board, administrators, teachers, students, and community members. And of course, I would address our schools' needs in a fiscally responsible way by prioritizing spending on programs that directly impact student learning, students' learning. I have been endorsed by educators, school board trustees, elected officials, the Marin Women's PAC, the Marin Professional Firefighters, and community members alike. I would be honored to serve as a trustee on the Tamil Pious Union High School District Board. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final opening statement from Ray Chattery.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present here. My name is Ray Chattery. First and foremost, I'm a proud parent of a freshman at Tam High. I also have another teenager in college at UC Santa Cruz. My wife is a provider here, both in the county and in the city, and we've lived in the county for about a decade now. My experience over the last two decades, I've been working in the federal government as well as helping run companies, healthcare companies mostly, in the US, all over the world, and I hope to bring that leadership experience to this position. Regarding academics, I have been in school for many, many years, too many years to count. I've been involved with working with various universities in the US and abroad and have dealt with and still deal with undergraduate and graduate students pretty much most of my life, so I know what students face when they finish high school and the choices they have to make. My interest in running for the Tam District Board of Trustees is first to give back to the community. I believe I can bring my national and global experience to help both the students and administrators deal with not only the competitive academic environment, but also deal with the important local issues that students and administrators face. As a board member, I'd like to help the school, help the school guide students like my daughter, think through some of these important challenging issues while being a student and evolving into a productive citizen. At the same time, I'd like to help the leadership in the district develop long-term strategies, help fundraise, foster relationships, and provide leadership during challenging times. I'm here to help. Thank you.
Thank you to all the candidates for your opening statements. Now we're going to turn to the questions, which include input from community partners plus interested community members. And thank you to everyone for your submissions. This time, the questions will start with Ida, and I am now going to read the first question. And as we go along, each candidate will have one minute for their answer. If any candidate needs me to repeat the question, just ask me to do so. So the first question this evening is, what do you view as the role and key responsibilities of a school board trustee?
Thank you for the question. So I view the role of the school board trustee as someone who is ready to advocate for our students, for our educational programs, for our public education, that we are community leaders, where we are bridging between our communities and not setting up walls. We're bridging. We are the governing body. We have one employee, the superintendent, and everybody have to get that right when you're, when you sit on the board. And so to work collaboratively with the superintendent to bring out the vision, the goals for the district across the board, that's a part of it. We are responsible and should be floating the LCAP, which is a Local Control Accountability Plan, and then helping to set direction. Where are we going in the school? And most importantly, accountability. We need to be accountable for what it is that we are saying we want to do.
Thank you. And next, Jennifer.
Thank you. So the first thing I would say is the board, a board member is an elected, an elected position by the community, and so we are there in a role of service to the students, teachers, and the greater community. We set forth the vision and goals that would best serve the students and the entire community, and we need to do so in a fiscally responsible manner so that, so that we have well-functioning schools that are, that remain the pride of our community for years to come. And that's how I see the role of a board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray?
Thank you. I believe first and foremost, we are here for the students and how the student can help the district. So I'd like to, like to be able to provide guidance for the administrator and the teachers to help the students. So that's, I think, should be the role and responsibility of a board trustee. Along with that, we can help the teachers evaluate the curriculum, also figure out what issues are the students are dealing with so they can feel valued and heard. I think the last thing is, we also need to figure out how to build a closer relationship between the schools and the community, which has been a problem in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Amos?
So when I, when I first joined the school board here at Lagunitas, the superintendent gave me a book. The book was titled How to Be a Good School Board Trustee. And his general philosophy was, don't get in my way. And unfortunately, that's the philosophy of a lot of school administrators, a lot of superintendents, which is, you're the trustee, you provide some oversight, you come to the meetings, you rubber stamp what we're going to do, but please, don't get too involved. Stay in your lane. Well, I'm not that good at staying in my lane. I believe that, that school administrators need rigorous oversight, and that's something that's important to me and something that I plan on providing. Meanwhile, listening to stakeholders is extremely important, and I must admit, administrators don't always do that. Listening to students, parents, taxpayers, and the larger community, these are the important things that we need to do as school board trustees, and it's certainly something that I plan on providing.
Thank you. That question about individual perceptions of role and key responsibilities leads to a second question, which is, what do you anticipate will be the most important issues that this Board of Trustees will be working on over the next four years? And on those important issues, what are the particular skills, experience, and knowledge you bring to that work? And first will be Jennifer.
Hi, thank you for that question. So first and foremost, I think the most important thing will be rebuilding trust with our community. I think there was, there's been a loss of trust. I think there's, and I think the way to do that is through communication and transparency. I think the loss of trust goes back many years, and I think it's time that we communicate effectively and are extremely transparent, both the board, the board with the community, as well as the administrators with the board. So that's the first step. The second would be, of course, to improve academic performance and, and, you know, also to do, to do everything in a fiscally responsible way. So it's something that I've been able to do on the Falcon Foundation. We've had, we've, we have budgets that we have to stick with. We can't fund everything, but we focus on important, important matters and important items for the classes and for the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray?
Thank you. I think the most important issues, again, focusing on the students is not only focusing, helping them with academics, but also helping the students deal with an increased level of mental stress and anxiety. I see that all the time. I start, saw that in my son when he was going to school. Started seeing that in my daughter and her friends, who are a little bit older than her. I think we have to figure out how to help the students cope with, with being successful in school first, and then augment that with what we can, how we can help the teachers help with that issue. My experience has been dealing with, at least in the academic environment, with various universities, and I've dealt and mentored many students, both undergrad and grad students, and I hope I can provide some guidance to administrators and teachers to help students in that effect. Thank you.
Amos?
Thank you very much. It's hard to pick any, any one thing, but you mentioned four years, so it's a good span of time. A few things come to mind. First is diversity, equity, and inclusion. Our schools have a real problem with this. You can see it in the graffiti that gets plastered on the walls every few months. We need to work harder to help these kids understand each other and to understand how we coexist. I have experience in that. I've done it in my district. I've brought students to the Contemporary Jewish Museum to help them understand issues around antisemitism. The bond measure is going to be a big issue if it passes, but also just making sure that we're focused on the budget. I have experience as a, as a member of a bond oversight committee and as a trustee who's responsible to the bottom line. And finally, I think that we have to overcome the achievement gap that we're seeing, and this is an issue around racial equity. We're not doing good enough in this area, and we need to work harder.
Thank you. Ida?
Yes, great question. I mean, there are so many areas that we have to look at. Absolutely, keeping our budget tight, the achievement gap, you know, relations with amongst our, our school size. And that's where I want to take a deeper dive, and that is climate and culture and belonging on our campuses across the board. We definitely need to work on, how do we just get along? And so, yes, I concur with what has been said in terms of the graffiti that is written on the walls, but right now, I'm doing the work. I already am volunteer doing this work on the Tamil Pious Union High School District, working with the Coalition of African-American for Student Achievement and Belonging. I'm working with the Racial Justice Task Force, because at the end of the day, we tire. We tire the same optics, and it's time for our children to learn that words matter. Coupled with, I really feel that the board needs to start working with the feeder schools, and that way, we begin to prepare them before they come to high school. You said I can finish my thought, finishing my.
You did, and we'll be coming back to these topics. So the next question, in Marin County, as been noted, there's some of the largest educational achievement and opportunity gaps between students of color and their white classmates. What would be your responsibility as an elected school board trustee to help close these gaps? And we'll go to Ray first for this one.
Thank you. I think what we need to do is, yes, understanding that there are these gaps, racial economic issues that we face, and having experienced that a little bit when I lived in Maryland, Louisiana, worked, I worked with mostly college, various colleges in the area, and those colleges worked with high school students to bring all students from racist, sorry, racist, to, to bring the educational parity to, to, so that they can, they can build these students to become better students in high school and college. I've also mentored myself, I've mentored high school students. In New Orleans, just to give you an example, with LSU on Tulane, I helped bring inner-city kids to science and math classes, because I saw that if you don't bring students in STEM programs by sixth grade, the students won't be able to succeed in them, and which is important for them in high school and college. Thank you.
Thank you. Amos?
We've been asked this question a lot. We've participated in a lot of these forums, and I say it each time, early intervention, early intervention, early intervention. Hiring $450 an hour consultants to try to address this problem when kids are already in high school, it may help, but it's certainly not going to be the panacea. We need to get to these kids when they are in middle school or even earlier. We need to help the feeder schools understand what the expectations are when these kids get into high school, and we need to teach to that. My goal would be for every kid in this county coming into high school to qualify for geometry. That would be exceptional, and it would be a real show that we've been able to tackle the achievement gap.
Thank you. Ida?
Thank you. Another great question. And yes, we've been to a few of these forums, and that has come up. For me, much like what was said, we need to start with the feeder schools, but the big word for me is expectations. Children can learn. Start with them early. Continue with them. Give them the ability to show you that they can learn, and then work with them where they are. We have visual learners, critical thinkers. There's so many ways to close the achievement gap, and it's one of the reasons why it's so important to do the work that we are doing right now. The Racial Justice Task Force, where that consultant is making whatever $450, $450 an hour, she is bringing to the forefront reasons why our kids, specifically our BIPOC students, are not achieving. And those are the types of things that our administrators, our educators need to, they need to know. And then this way, we begin to gradually, and thankfully, and let me finish my sentence. Thankfully, we have academic programs like Bridge the Gap, who are helping some of our BIPOC students. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jennifer?
Thank you so much for this question. So I agree with what, what others have said, that this, this issue needs to be addressed early on. By high school, it may be too late. However, we are, we are running for a high school board. So I think that in, on the high school level, what we need to do is prioritize spending on specialists who can help with academics in the classrooms. The teachers, we, there's one teacher in a class, and there are no resource specialists. There are no reading specialists. There are no math specialists. If we want to actually help the achievement gap, we need to bring specialists in to help with that gap and to help students with the academics. Another way to do that is we can provide additional educational resources, tutoring, mentorships. I mean, there are, there are plenty of ways to do it, but I think it, I think we have to bring the academic resources into the classrooms and help the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to remind myself and all of the candidates that because of the interpretation, we're going to speak at a pace that they can keep up, and we really appreciate that we are trying to include as many interested community members in this tonight. As enrollment, question four, as enrollment declines, how will you maintain a balanced budget and help ensure student success? And the first person on that question will be Ray.
Thank you. I think first of all, we need to look at the budget in a way, how we, how we can get parity across all students. You know, if I, if I put on my, you know, hat that I, when I run companies, this is exactly how I do. I operationalize what the, you know, what the, what the budget is based on the budget. The same thing needs to be done here. We need to figure out what the strategy is going to be for long term, what, how budget, our budget's going to be potentially going down, and based on that, what we need to do for our, for each of our students. And we need to also prepare for longer or bigger budget cuts in the future. So we, we have to be able to prepare for that and be able to bring in resources that don't cost us, like some of my colleagues said, $450 an hour and maybe do, do with less, and also bring in parents to help at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Amos?
Well, I'm going to blow your mind here and tell you that declining enrollment is actually good for the school district. We're a basic aid district. That means that we get We're a basic aid district. That means that we get a certain amount of funding regardless of how many kids are in the in the district. And so the fewer district, the fewer students that we have, the more money we can spend per pupil. And so, so I apologize, but the question is kind of, you know, it's a little wonky. So the real thing about enrollment declining is really about community. Can we still sustain a vibrant educational community with fewer students? And I believe we can. The high schools are quite large already, and I think that they'll, they'll be successful even with declining enrollment.
Thank you very much. And that would next be Ida.
So can you repeat the question?
The the question as submitted was, as enrollment declines, how will you maintain a balanced budget and ensure student success?
Okay, yes, that is a great question. In many ways, you know, you really don't want to see enrollment declining, in my opinion, because it it kind of has this picture to the greater community that maybe our, our, our district is is not, you know, the best schools, when you start seeing people flee. Are we, are we giving them the product that they need? And and that's not a picture that that I would like to promote in any ways, because these are exceptional, incredible schools, and we are, a lot of our kids are going to some of the best colleges. And so you always have to look at the budget and make sure that we are maintaining, you know, our, our, our budget. But as it was just alluded to, we are a basic aid, so you're only going to get so much money. But in the same regard, we want, we want students to come in and not exit out. And I support absolutely a programs that are going to draw and not detract. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Thank you so much. So first, I want to give kudos to the current board, who have done a great job with our budget and maintaining healthy reserves. I know they, back in 2018, they were, our, our district was facing consultancy, and they completely turned that around, so they deserve credit for that. But I also agree with what Amos said. We are a basic aid district, which means that we do not receive funding based on enrollment. We receive funding in excess of what the state would give us. So that means, that's good. We're in good shape. So as enrollment declines, we just have to look at, we're going to have to continue to look at staffing and make sure we meet our staffing needs and because even though we are basic aid and that we have more funding and funding not based on students, the problem with basic aid is you have to forecast pretty far out in advance. And sometimes you can't anticipate certain things, you know, that far out. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, what does a safe school look like in the wake of school shootings across the country and threats of violence right here in our county? What should the Board of Trustees do to support school safety? And first on this question will be Amos.
Thanks so much. Yeah, this is a tough one. I mean, if you look at our campuses, especially something like Archie Williams, they're, they're indoor-outdoor campuses. They're, they're pretty wide open. It's certainly a challenge. Every school has an emergency plan. The emergency plan is something that needs to be practiced with our students. I would say that it probably doesn't happen enough, but I think that that's extremely important. We need to be able to teach our kids how to identify fellow students who are challenged, who are having challenges, and give them a safe reporting system to allow them to tell a parent, a teacher, an administrator that there's an issue. Those, that's extremely important. What should the board do to support this? The board should encourage administrators to work on their emergency plans, to make sure that there's a, there's a safe reporting system, and to teach teachers how to identify this kind of stuff with kids that are having challenges so that they can get ahead of the, get ahead of the curve in a really difficult situation.
Ida.
Uh, yes, I I just wanted to check in with the Spanish interpreters. Are we, are we on pace? Ahead of them? Okay. Um, so the question is, what what does a safe school look like?
Yes, a safe school look like and what should the Board of Trustees do to support safety?
Thank you. So so I've been to each of the campuses. You know, I haven't, I haven't gone to some of them recently, but they're all open campuses. And so what a safe school looks like to me is to have a plan for each campus. What what is, what is the safety plan? To app, app, absolutely execute those plans periodically to have close ties with your local law enforcement. So for, for Redwood, it would be, I cannot recall the police department. For for Tim, it would be Mill Valley, the Mill Valley Police Department. And then for our kids, absolutely, to see something, say something. And finally, to bridge in the communities, right? Our communities need to be involved in some way. I don't know if that's your parent-teacher association. And if if there isn't a safety group on each campus, I think one should be developed, or one should be made. And I think that the Board of Trustees should should support that work.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Hi, thank you. So I agree with some, some of what was already said. I think we need a proper emergency preparedness plan. I think we need to work with local law enforcement and firefighters. I was surprised to learn that the board has never brought in the Marin Firefighters Association to come speak with them on some emergency plans. So I think it's really important to work with our local experts on how to address this. And I agree with what Amos and Ida, Ida already said, which is we have wonderful, well-funded wellness centers, and we need to utilize those resources as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ray?
Thank you. Yeah, this has been a concern recently, as you know, as all of us know, there was a, there was a news on last Friday when Tam High was, you know, there was a bomb threat. Interestingly, a few days before that, there was another scare that was not properly addressed. The students feel that that they haven't been going, they haven't gone through an educational process for this. So I think the school is, the system is, or district is failing on that. So too, as some of my colleagues described, I I think there needs to be a higher level of training given to both the teachers, administrators, mostly the administrators, and the students, all of them together. The good thing is, we live in, we live in pretty close to Silicon Valley. There are actually now technologies coming out that are not that expensive. In fact, I'm involved with one right now to implement them in a very easy way to to deter school, to deter any potential problems and increase school safety. And these things are not that hard to do anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. As has been brought up, the school district has provided what seems to be multiple anti-racist programs. And yet, last school year was marked by a number of what are known as hate incidents. Do you believe the current anti-racist programs are bringing about positive change? And or what new efforts, if any, would you propose? And first on this is Ida.
Yeah, thank you. You know, the, the, it's, it's, it's a subject matter that is perpetual. It's like we go too long for too many times to have this same discussion. I am a product of the Tema Pius Union High School District, and back in the seventies, the exact same discussion. However, an incident that happened last October, and folks from my community, we triaged really fast and got with administration and teachers, the principal, the superintendent, to talk about how do we forge forward with solutions? And we are doing the work. And so the one thing that I appreciate, not only for the superintendent, for the school board, and for our administrator, is they are listening. They're listening. We're developing. We're putting plans together so that when racial incidents happen, like the one that happened last Friday, kids are already prepared to take the next step.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Thank you. So to answer your question, unfortunately, I don't think what we're doing is working. And I think the reason that it's not working is because we are not going to to the teachers and asking them directly if, what is resonating with the students. The teachers are there in the classroom. They're quite literally the boots on the ground. They see what resonates with the kids and what does not resonate with the kids. And I would advocate for much stronger communication with the teachers to hear what is resonating with the students, what is working, what what do the students roll their eyes at? I would like to know what we can do better. I think, you know, inclusive curriculum is an important, an important factor. I think we need diverse materials. We need divorce, diverse voices in the classrooms through books, through poetry, essays. I mean, all of those things help the students actually walk in someone else's shoes. I think if we do things like that, we would develop students with more empathy and hopefully have many, many fewer of these horrible incidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray?
Thank you. Having lived in the deep south for over a decade, you know, I've seen some programs that work, and what I've seen works is all about educating, educating not only the students over and over again, as well as the community. And I think it needs to be an inclusive process for for reaching out between the school, community, and and also having the teachers be involved in doing that. I think in this day and age, issues such as, you know, this should not be a problem. Unfortunately, it is, and it's become, it's becoming even more apparent with with even recent, you know, notices and and graffiti that we see. So I think we are obviously not doing a good job, and we need to step up to 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 it, to educate and develop a better curriculum for doing this better. Thank you.
Thank you. Amos?
This is an issue that that bothers me immensely. My father was the first rabbi to walk into the Dachau concentration camp after liberation in 1945. My family and and I have been, have been focused on antisemitism for so long, for racial equity. And it's getting harder and harder to fight that fight. It's an uphill battle. Social media, television, politics. I mean, how can we compete? It's, it's really hard, but we do. We have to compete, and we have to keep trying. And we need to do more. And I must admit that, you know, I don't have all the answers here. No one does, because we, we still have a ways to go. But I certainly would like to work on it. I've been working on it in my local district. I was on the board of the Holocaust Center of Northern California. I will continue to work on this until we solve the problem.
Thank you. So we're going to shift gears back to the fiscal world. How can the school district ensure financial accountability and transparency for the community, particularly in light of bond measure B on the November ballot? So fiscal accountability and transparency, Jennifer, could you go first?
Sure. Well, as it relates to bond measure B, I think, I think bond measure B is much better than bond measure A. I think what the, what the district did was they listened to the community. They became more transparent. And they created a bond that's much leaner, that that addresses the immediate needs of the district. And and as a result, I I am hopeful that it will pass. I think that is, that is the way to address, to address the needs in a fiscally responsible way. I think you need to address the immediate needs. I think you need to not overreach, and I think you need to make sure that you listen to community input when going for these things.
Thank you. And Ray?
Thank you. I think the the accountability and transparency go hand in hand. The, the, the community needs to know what they're going to be supporting the district on. I think what happens right now is with any bond measure, once, once it's passed, the districts do not go back as much as they should, talk about what is working, what is not working, and how they can do any future measures much better. So there's very little accountability to the community, or not, not as much accountability, community and transparency is very low. I think that needs to go up. The people need to feel that they're part of, part of, you know, what they're paid for and what they're getting in return. And the district, all the districts, not only our district, but other districts also need to do the same thing to to bring this transparency. And I think if if we do that, then we'll be able to do, then we'll be able to pass not only, hopefully, this bond, but other bonds in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Amos?
If you've been to any of the school board meetings, when the section of the meeting comes where the board members are asked to approve the warrants, I will tell you, and I bet that every time, those warrants get passed unanimously. The warrants are the, are the, are the invoices, the bills. These, these are the important things that let us know what the school is spending money on. And if you look at them, because they're in your board package, they're, they're written in a foreign language. It's very difficult to discern what they are. But we need to do a much better job of paying attention to those warrants and communicating to our community what those warrants are. As it relates to measure B, you know, I I didn't support measure A. I'm supporting measure B. But bond oversight is going to be critical. We have to be rigorous about this. The truth is that these vendors who get contracts with schools, you know, it's, it's the government, you know, they're, they're willing to charge a little bit more because they know that it isn't coming out of a mom and pop store. It's just the sad truth. I've seen what they charge for photocopies. It's, it's not pretty.
Ida.
Yeah, so fiscal accountability and transparency is, it's crucial. It's important. In, just going back to measure A, it, it, it did not pass. It was, it was a large price tag, but I, I believe that the thought behind that was that it would take care of all of the needs across the campus. We have a large footprint. So all of the needs across the campus are going to take care of. Now we have a bond measure B, and it's a smaller packet. And I tell you, if that bond does not pass, I support the bond. If it does not pass, it is going to come back to the board to make some critical cuts. There's, there's about a million dollars, a million that's weaved into the current budget that support our teachers. The moment we start talking about we're going to cut teachers, we're going to cut classes, we're going to cut, 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 we will hear from the community at large. So when you talk about transparency, I agree. We need to be in front of the community, letting them know exactly what it is that we're doing with the dollars that have been afforded to the district. Thank you.
Thank you. The following question relates to mental health, which can be a sensitive topic. Many students in this district are facing multiple stressors, social, emotional, academic, and other factors that can impact their well-being in complicated ways, sometimes with painful or even tragic outcomes. What is your view of how to better support individual and collective mental health? Ray?
Thank you. This is, this is actually a very, very important question. This, and this has, the mental stressors have increased and will continue to increase as, as students get, you know, flooded with social media and, and not only have to deal with academics, but there's also, you know, a lot of things that come up, bullying come up, and bullying comes up, which, which is not, which not talked about as much. Having, having been involved with the National Institutes of Mental Health in my past, there are, there are programs out there, national programs out there, that we can bring at very, very low cost, if, if, if that from, from, with support from the government and which have been implemented in other states. We implemented that in, in actually colleges, and that can be done in high schools as well. So this can be brought to high schools, and I think it's very, very much needed for, for our students. I, I'm very concerned about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Amos?
Yeah, the interesting thing about the mental health issue is that it ties directly into school safety. So it's kind of a, a combination of sorts. My feeling about the topic is that we need to get more parents involved. An example, my daughter was being bullied. an example, my daughter was being bullied on social media. Some other students uh, took over one of her friend's phones and started texting her uh, through Instagram as if they were this other student, when of course they weren't. And it kind of, it, it had an effect on her, a really negative impact on her. It's a bad experience, type of bullying uh, associated with social media. Uh, but we need to get parents more involved. Parents need to understand what's happening to to our kids. I don't know if we're actually talking to them enough. I don't know if we have open lines of communication with our kids well enough. Certainly, our kids never listen to us because we're their parents. So we have to find a solution to that. We have to be able for, we have to be able to have these open communications so that we can, we can address issues when they arise.
Thank you. Ida?
So before I answer the question, something is going on with the clock because the thirty-second is not coming up. But I'm going to answer the question for you. I, I think the one um, uh proactive thing that the district has done is is incorporated wellness centers on the campuses. And so I did my internship at uh, the Tampa Pius High School and it was a safe space for uh, kids that were experiencing whatever issue that they were experiencing to come in and have a conversation with someone who would listen. So I'm a social worker by profession and that was a clinical environment that they can come in and just tell me what was going on. As long as it was not a danger to them or to others, we kept it very confidential. And so that safe space matters. Kids know that they're having some issues. That's where they can go to the wellness center. But absolutely, I agree that our, our parents should find, should see signs of what's going on. When a parent is telling us that their kid is wants to commit suicide because of an incident that happened on the campus, that's a problem.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you for this question. Um, yeah, we have a real problem. Uh, every year, um, there is one, if not more, uh, suicides in our district and um, and many other mental health crises. Uh, I think, as Ida mentioned, we have our wellness centers. They're luckily, they're wonderful and well-funded and they should continue to always be well-funded. And I'm going to piggyback on what Amos said, which is uh, we need parent education. We need parent involvement. Um, there are parent education nights that uh, occur and there is one, I think it either just happened or will be happening soon about suicide prevention. We need to communicate those effectively because I don't think enough people are hearing about them. They're not very well-attended and we need to make sure that that information gets out to as many people as possible. It cannot the, if, if it's left to the schools alone and the district alone, it, it, it won't work. We need parent involvement. We need community involvement. It really is a crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. How will you ensure that all students in the TAM district have access to the A through G courses they need to be eligible for UC and CSU? And that students have adequate support in place to be successful in those courses? Ray?
Thank you. This is actually a very pertinent question because um, unfortunately, my son wasn't in TAM district, but he was in the San Rafael district. And until I looked at um, the coursework that he had done, he wasn't actually, um, hadn't finished all the courses and his counselor had not given him proper guidance. So I had to step in and do that. So I think both parents and and teachers need to be involved with this uh, to make sure uh, students um, uh, complete um, the, all the courses on the necessary courses for the UC uh, programs. Uh, so that's one thing. The second thing is the students also uh, need to be, sometimes the students get too distracted. So students need to have some sort of checklist that um, that uh, both the teachers, um, their um, counselors and the teachers can, can check with. I, I think I saw my son fall to the cracks on that and thankfully it was caught in time, but I think it happens more often than not. So I think we need to implement some of these measures so that the parents can keep on top of that pretty much every year um, over the next, uh, last four years.
Thank you. Amos?
Uh, so to the question about ensuring all students have access to to uh, A through G classes, currently, all of the high schools offer access to them. So access is there. Uh, and then the second question, which is, how do they, how are they successful in these classes? Well, that's a much more complicated uh, question and and a harder one to answer. Um, that's a question about student achievement in general. Uh, it is a question about um, quality teachers, parent involvement, um, accountability, um, and a student's desire to learn. And I wish that I had a, a really quick thirty-second answer for you to tell you how all of that comes together and we solve the problem, but unfortunately I don't. Uh, what I will say is that, as, as Ray was mentioning, course selection is key. We sit down with our daughter every year and we go through course selection. You can see how one course moves on to the next and you can see progression through all four years. It's really important that parents take, take an active role in that with their kids every year.
Thank you. Ida?
Uh, yeah, so the district does have um, the courses that are already in place uh, to offer for, for kids to take uh, AG uh, requirement courses. However, I, I feel that it starts at an early age, right? So I did my thesis at Dominican University on the path uh, to college. And I believe that, you know, when students start thinking as early as fifth grade and you're working, what, what's your dream? What's your desire? What you want to do? And how you get that? How, how do you get to that path? Um, regrettably, sometimes, you know, some of our kids um, fall to the wayside, so they're not fa- falling through, but it takes students, parents, counselors, instructors, the whole gamut. It takes, it takes um, academic um, support programs like the Hannah Project, who does after, after uh, school homework at night. Uh, for parents who, who need to have that augmented program. Uh, it takes programs like that and it takes drive. So our kids know that they can do it.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Sure. So um, as was mentioned, there is access. Every school has uh, classes that meet those requirements. But um, I think the students need to be able to meet with counselors regularly to look at their schedules and through course selection. I think it, it, right now, the way it works is that students have to proactively approach the counselors. I think there needs to be more of a program in place where students do meet with counselors regularly to make sure that they are meeting those requirements. Um, and again, I, I agree that there needs to be parent and caretaker involvement and there needs to be communication um, from the district so that the parents know that they need to be involved. They know that they need to check, they need to check these um, courses and make sure that their students are, are on track. And then in terms of achievement, again, like I've said before, we need to have resources and programs in place in the classrooms so that students can, can achieve. Uh, if they need help, we need to have specialists there to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next question from the community is that not all students are immediately or ever planning on attending a four-year college, even though they're aware of the possibility of doing so. What are other types of learning dirt journeys that the district should be offering? And let's start with Amos.
Uh, we, we were asked about this at one of the other forums and I, I mentioned that, you know, every student is an individual. They are all on their own path. They, uh, some of them, like you said, will go to college and some of them will learn a trade uh, and others will find a different path. And that's okay. Regardless of what they decide, it's our responsibility as a district to provide the highest quality education that meets whatever those goals may be. And so uh, if, for instance, someone has decided that they're interested in a trade, well, let's make sure that we have those types of skill, those types of classes to teach those skills uh, to get them to the next step as an apprentice or whatever that may be in whatever the tr- the trade is. There are kids that are computer whizzes, they're technology whizzes and they don't go to, they don't go to college. And that's okay too. Let's make sure that we have next generation technology classes for those kids who are hyper-interested in new technology. Uh, but ultimately, we have to provide the best education for every kid and whatever their goal may be.
Thank you. Ida?
Yeah, so uh, I agree. You know, not, not every student is charting a path to go to a four-year, four-year university. And I would hope that um, you know, programs can be augmented within the district to, to um, meet that, meet that kid's interest. Uh, I can remember when in high school a few years ago, uh, we had um, a, a shop class where uh, some of our, some of our folks were doing auto mechanic at the school. You know, whatever it is, but I believe that if, if we can't, if it's not within our means and in our budget, let's work with some of our community partners. Let, let's, I invite them to help teach our kids some of the trades. Of course, in, in the window where it is uh, reasonable and safe uh, because not everybody is charting a path to go to UC Santa Cruz, although I'm sure some of our students are headed that way.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you. Um, yeah, so I agree that not everyone learns the same way and not everyone is headed on the same path. I think our schools do a really good job of um, explaining to students that there are other options other than a four-year uh, university. They, they speak a lot about um, community colleges and two-year and junior colleges. I think what they don't speak enough about is um, the trades and vocational schools. Uh, there is a program right now in San Rafael. I believe it's housed at Terra Linda um, where they are doing vocational training and it's open to all of Marin County students. But I, but I'm surprised at how few people know this and I think we need to, to do a much better job of communicating that. Um, and again, I, I agree with what has been said that what is taught in the school needs to be uh, top-notch. We need to educate our students in the best way possible with uh, engaging and um, experiential learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray?
Thank you. We need to uh, find out what the, our kids, our children are interested in doing and and encourage them to do what they love to do. You know, you're absolutely right. Not everyone wants to go to college right after, uh, right away or might never go to college. So there's not programs out there, as some of my colleagues mentioned. There are programs not only in the county, but also in the state. I was fortunate to be involved with a young man's life. A person had uh, dropped off um, from high school, later on went to get a GED and then ultimately um, went to Johns Hopkins and did a program at Johns Hopkins in Oxford. Thankfully, I was involved with that um, gentleman. Went to school later and I think some students figure out what, what their journey is going to be um, as, as they're going through high school. And uh, we need to be encouraging um, you know, we'll sit down with the student, encourage them to do what they want to do, sit down with their counselors and teachers and, and figure out the best path, whether it's college, uh, whether it's a vocational training. Um, a- a- at the end of the day, we want all of them to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. What strategies would you use um, as a board of trustee member to understand the day-to-day reality that students and families, faculty and staff are experiencing? And how would you use that input? Ida?
That is a loaded question, quite frankly, because it's going to be different for everyone, you know? Once, once um, you have left your home and made it to the campus, maybe that's on the bus. Maybe you've taken your e-bike safely. Uh, maybe you've ridden a traditional bike. Uh, maybe you've taken the bus. But the moment that you step on the campus and the expectation of once you step on the campus and, and now you're going to integrate into your first period, whatever that is, I think that it's important for uh, faculty and staff and students to be heightened as to what that particular student might be going through or not going through. It could be in their body language. It could be, it could be um, some subtleties. But that needs to be something that um, that they recognize so, so that they can do a check-in. You know what? Jen, you're not looking too good today. What's going on? Um, so there is no cookie cutter answer to that question because everyone's going to come on the site differently.
Thank you. Um, Jennifer?
Thank you. Um, so I think the most important thing to do is communicate, communicate, communicate. I think um, we are so lucky that we have such wonderful teachers in our district and our teachers are there with the students day in and day out. That's, that's who we need to ask. We need to look to the teachers for guidance. I think um, I think right now, we don't get, receive enough feedback from the teachers. Uh, and I think that they are there day-to-day, you know, hearing from the students every single day and we need to be able to better communicate with them and listen to them and hear what they're hearing and be able to use that to develop strategies. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray?
Uh, thank you. This is a great question. I think, you know, first and foremost, as parents, we need to be understand, we need to understand what our children are going through and sometimes, you know, they might not have the best day, you know, for whatever reasons. Exam, you know, not dealing with another friend or, or bullying or whatever it is. We need to be able to be able to communicate with our, our children. And then also, I think there needs to be more uh, parent, teacher interaction. I don't think it happens enough. There's enough out there, but I think it's to happen more so that interaction brings together uh, environment where we, where we see um, if some children's um, is failing in some, some way, whether it's uh, social or academic and, and be able to help um, both the faculty and the administrators deal with that uh, with the child's issue. Um, so again, there's no, there's no easy answer for this, but I'm hoping that parents uh, and teachers come together to um, help the student um, do a good job pretty much every day. It's not going to happen, but we'll try.
Thank you. Amos?
So the question was strategies as a trustee to understand day-to-day activities. Is that correct?
The day-to-day experience.
Day-to-day experience. So what, a- as a, as a school board trustee in Lagunitas, we had uh, mornings where we stood outside when kids were being dropped off and had coffee available to parents so that we could talk to them. We met with teachers. We were invited by teachers to have a meeting with them without administrators in place. Uh, and uh, I volunteered in the classroom. These were ways that I was able to understand these day-to-day activities. Uh, trustees need to be involved. They need to have coffee chats, open off, office hours. Uh, they need to be visiting the schools and they need to be volunteering if they can in the classroom. Meanwhile, they need to be spending more time with administrators. They need to understand what's happening at every desk uh, along the administration path and especially need to meet with chief business officers and others who are responsible for the budget uh, to understand everything about how money is being spent. It's key to success.
Thank you all very much. This concludes the question portion of the forum. We're going to give the candidates a moment to catch their breath before their closing statements because I have some very important election information. Slide one, please. We have important dates coming up. Ballots are being mailed to voters starting October seventh. Right after that, ballot drop boxes will be available. The last day to register to vote online is October eleventh. You can return your ballots by US mail at an official secure ballot drop box or at any vote center. For in-person voting, vote centers replace what used to be your assigned polling places. Voters can vote in person at any vote center in Marin and a complete list of locations is included in the voter information guide that will be sent to you. All vote centers will be open at least four days before election day. And yes, November fifth is election day. Mailed ballots must be postmarked no later than this date and the vote centers will be open until eight PM. And ballots returned using a drop box also must be deposited by eight PM. Next slide two, please. Here are those same important dates in Spanish. We want to remind all voters, be sure to sign your ballot if you're returning it by mail or in a drop box. That's how it can get counted. And if you have elections about vote, uh, questions about voting, please reach out to Marin County's Elections Department in person, online, or by phone. Slide three, please. There are many online resources for election information, including the League's website at MarinLWV.org. Another helpful League of Women Voters resource is Vote 411, an online tool that provides information about what's on your ballot, including including local races and candidates. Candidates are invited to enter their information and voters can get a personalized list of candidates, including their biographies and top priorities. And information about local ballot measures and more in English and Spanish. Vote411 replaces Voter's Edge if you used to use that resource. Please visit Vote411.org. Thank you. And now the candidates will be making closing statements. And we will be going-
Excuse me, before we move on, just a point of clarity, because on the, on the one slide, you said the last day to register to vote was uh the eleventh, but the slide says the twenty-first. So which one is it?
Excuse me? You know what? My apologies, Ida. I was looking at the slide and looking at my script and you are doing a great job making sure we get this right. What I want to say and clarify is October twenty-first is the last day to register to vote online. And if you happen to know somebody who didn't register to vote by October twenty-first, they can still register, but only in person. Thank you very much for making sure we're keeping it clear for folks. And there's many resources at the League website and Vote411 and the County Elections Office. There are a ton of people who want to make sure we all get our ballots in. So the closing statements will be in uh reverse order of what we did at the start. And we will begin with Ray.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me come to the forum and present and go over questions. I'm really humbled to be part of such a accomplished group of candidates running alongside me. They're truly great. Uh I'm primarily interested in being here as an advocate for students in my district, like my daughter. And at the same time, I want to see each and every student thrive. And I want to do that by supporting the teachers and administrators as needed. As the someone who works globally, I've seen the world become flatterer and smaller over the last few decades. And the students are facing increased competition. And uh I want to be, I want to make sure that I can help our students perform well in academics. But also cope with the social dynamics that we talked about as they prepare for college or a job to become responsible adults in the future. I want the TAM district to become bigger and better. Together as parents and well-wishers and create an encouraging and safe environment for our awesome teenagers to become successful, responsible citizens of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Hi, thank you. I'm sorry, I have some uh problems, internet problems. But I thank you for hosting us tonight. It was great to answer your questions and it was really great to hear from candidates.
We're gonna, we're going to speak slowly. We have, you have, we can-
Okay. Sorry. Uh thank you for hosting us tonight. Um it was really great to hear from the candidates. So I see the role of board member as one of service to our students, teachers and the greater community. As a volunteer for over thirteen years, I've listened to our teachers, students and community members. What I've heard, we need to focus on academic programs that will create critical thinkers who are empathetic and ready to embrace the steps they take in life. We need to be strategic and fiscally minded as we set goals because unfortunately, we do not have unlimited funds. We need to make sure that we're responsible with our finances, build and maintain stronger academic in our school. And to realize these, we need to make sure that there's transparency and active, ongoing communication with our schools and our students. If we create these plans with these minds, we're sure to have strong and strong schools for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Ida?
Okay, for some reason I thought it would be Amos. However, I think, you know, any of, any one of us, us before you tonight are in a position to serve on this board. I am here because I'm committed and ready to do the work. Uh as I mentioned earlier, I'm a strong believer in the transformative power of public service. It is my calling. I follow in my mother's footsteps um in in the, in the sense that I have the passion respect that embodies uh what it takes to be a school board member. I'm ready to serve all students across the Tampa Pius Unified uh School District, a holder of masters in social work. And I understand how to work with people with empathy. I've been endorsed by the Democratic Central Committee in Marin, North Bay Labor Union Council Supervisors, Molten Peters, Rice Sackett. Our leaders at uh San and Samuel Town Councils, Steve Berto and Brian Colbert. I have endorsements from trustees and commi- community members and of course, my family. And I am proud of the ability to bring people together. Thank you.
Thank you. Amos?
Hi, uh thank you again to the League of Women Voters. I am running for the Tampa Pius Union High School District Board of Education because it needs tested leadership. My goals, uh if elected, are to address district spending, to provide rigorous bond oversight should measure be passed and to focus on academic achievement. Uh you've heard tonight that there are a lot of issues that the school district is facing. And it all bo- it all boils down to what we can afford to address. And that means paying a keen eye, keen eye and attention on the budget. Uh I'm a lot of things. I'm a parent, uh I'm a leader, uh I'm a mountain bike coach. One of the things that I am not is I am not a rubber stamp. And I think you've heard that from me tonight over and over again. Uh I'm a little different than everyone else here. I voted against Measure A and I I'm dedicated to providing the serious oversight that this school board needs and the administrators need.
Thank you very much to all four of the candidates. Union High uh School District Board of Trustees. Thank you to Ray Chowdery. Thank you to Jennifer Holden. Thank you to Amos Klosner. Thank you to Ida Times-Green. We also want to thank everybody on the League team. There are many people behind the scenes to make this possible. And of course, to our interpreters and our partners at the Community Media Center of Marin. A video of tonight's forum will be posted on the League's website in the next few days. And I especially want to thank everybody who either tuned in tonight or who will be watching us for the efforts you're making to be an informed voter on such an important decision. And now we'll have a few final remarks from TAM Union High School District Superintendent Tara Tapier. Tara?
Uh thank you, Susan. Thank you uh to our candidates for participating in the event tonight and to the League of Women Voters for still facilitating this forum. We appreciate the community involvement in identifying the best candidates for the TAM District Board of Trustees.
Thank you all very, very much. And um please, um go vote and encourage others to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Going to go watch some football.